Committee, the whole meeting September 24th. We have regrets from Councillor Siret and Councillor Murphy, is that correct?
It's correct.
Then we'll move on to approval of agenda, and we do have an addition under six H, I guess, approval of audited financial statements.
It is on there.
Oh, it's on there?
It's on here, yes.
Not on mine, okay.
Refresh.
Yeah, okay. Anybody, any other approve, any other, I guess, additions? Councillor LeBlanc.
This is a little bit different situation. I do have an addition to the agenda, but it's actually quite similar to item 6D, the Pumneco point, no dumping sign request. Coincidentally, there's been a high demand from local residents in Westport, exact same problem with the point in Wedgeport, and I was actually gonna bring it up tonight, and I had a laugh when I seen that this morning on the Pumneco point. So I don't know if you want to add it to 6D, or make, or if you have to add a second line item there.
We can amend that to call it Wedgeport and Pumneco point.
Yeah, that's right. So we'll keep it under six C then.
Great.
Keep it D here.
D, yeah.
Okay. I guess I got the page that I printed off this afternoon.
Yeah.
With my notes, with my notes on it, so.
I'll move, we approve the agenda as circulated.
Okay. Moved and seconded?
I had, I had something.
Okay.
I laid on there.
Yeah, sorry.
Where it would fit, but I, I had a letter from the Post Office, the, the union, that where they plan on closing, closing on Saturdays here in Tuskegee, and I was asked, I got a letter from the address to myself as councillor, from the union, want to know if we support it or how, but I didn't want to do anything on my own, and I just thought maybe I should bring that here, but I don't know exactly where it fits in this agenda. I, I was kind of looking, I was gonna bring it under councillors' reports, but there's no councillors' reports on this, in this meeting, so I don't know where I can bring that, but I'd just like to see how the, the council feels on that.
I had a similar letter, actually.
We all have.
Yeah, we all have that letter.
From the union lately?
Well, well, back.
Mine was like a year ago.
Oh, no, no, that was something when they were talking about it, about, well, it was basically the same, I remember, that's what I said to the Post Office here, that, that we had already dealt with that. We had written a letter to the-
Canada Post.
Canada Post.
That we didn't support it.
But this one here, I don't know if the union is looking for something from us, and I don't know how, what's our policy on doing that, I just didn't want to do anything as-
We don't get involved, but.
But anyway, it's, that's basically all I wanted to bring up, was that they're, they're asking, they were asking me, they were hoping that I would do something, react to it prior to a certain date, because they were having a meeting, and I just couldn't, I didn't want to respond, anything myself, but I figured if, if anything went to them, it would come from council and not from, from me personally. If I was gonna do it personally, it was, it would have been a personal comment and not reflected on the, not reflecting on the council or the municipalities, so. That's all I wanted to bring up.
Same thing in Pumneco, I hear, they cut the Saturday morning off.
They want, they want to close the Saturday, they want to, to reduce the hours, which means, reduce the hours of the temporary help, which means now, at noon, if, if the temporary help is not there at noon, they're saying that maybe they can close from noon to one, which is all things that they feel is going to affect the, the public very, very much in a way that it's not acceptable to, to do that, but I don't think we, as council, can do a whole lot about it. I think the decision is gonna come from them. We've already written a letter expressing our, our opposition to what they've planned on doing anyway, so I, I don't know if there's anything further that we can do. I just want to respond somehow to them about what, what I've done, that's all, since it came directly to me.
All right, so, go ahead, Councillor Dawson.
I had one too for the Glenwood. It's been our practice over the years, anything to do with union negotiations, whether it was Canada Post or anybody else, we've had, like, we stayed completely away from that.
Okay, so you received the same thing?
Yeah, one for Glenwood, I think I even got one to do with Pumneco.
Yeah, he's from Pumneco.
From the CPAA or?
Yeah.
Okay.
We just, we just don't act on them, because you're gonna, I mean, there could be people here that are pro-union or, or anti-union, and we just don't want to get into that-
Okay.
-argument, and it's not, it's something we've stayed away from.
Okay, so in my hearing, we're not going to add it to the agenda, is that correct?
That's correct, as far as I can, as far as I-
All right, any other additions? Question? All those in favor of the agenda? Contrary, okay. Conflict of interest declaration, anybody have conflict of interest declaration with any of the items? Okay, having heard none, we'll move on to number four, business arising from minutes. It's the YASTA bylaws. The bylaws were brought to our solicitor, and he had comments, and I think Alan, that's yours?
Yes, the solicitor did provide comments on, on these, on the draft bylaws, were, I guess, the, the last of the four that have not approved this as presented. I guess, from my perspective, the questions that Real brought up were very valid, a lot of them are things that we could ultimately, that we have already provided to YASTA to, to make, affect the change, because they were actually fairly minor in nature, like in the sense of changing the, the name, there were some errors around definitions that should be added. None of those would be considered contrary to the bylaws that had been approved by the other three. There was one, one item that he had identified as a concern, however, that item was, was strongly debated at the YASTA table, so I think that not being part of that debate, he would have raised that, which was a very legitimate point, and however, I, I think the group debated it and agreed that it was okay as it stood. So I think, you know, while, while there are some minor changes that, that he would and I would propose, I think the, the expedient thing to do would be to approve these bylaws with, with the minor amendments that, that the solicitors provided, I've already provided to YASTA to make change, so I don't even know that the motion would have to even say that, but from the perspective of, of, of moving this forward, some of the things that they're looking to do is adding another member and solidifying some of the mandate of the organization, so I think that to hold that back is to hold back the operation of, of the regional body, and so I don't think that-
I'll move to approve the YASTA bylaws.
Okay, motion on the floor to move the YASTA bylaws, seconded by, moved by Warden Dothrulma, seconded by Councillor Danny Muse. Any more questions or anything? Okay, you have a question, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Okay, we'll move to number five. The financial report, again, that would be you, Alan?
It would, I will be very brief, because we're still kind of early in the game, in the fiscal year, I should say. We did, we did basically have an audit committee meeting prior to this, which went in a lot of detail around the prior years, so we, we've gotten some very useful information around our position up until now. Now, this is actually looking at five months into the current fiscal year. We are projecting a surplus at this time. The, the accuracy of this projection gets better as the year goes on. Right now, we're projecting 131,000 unrestricted surplus. That, in a lot of ways, is due to timing around projects, there are certain projects that we, we anticipated to be further along than they are. We're always a little aggressive around when we think those things are going to occur. They occurred a little slower, which is why we're showing a surplus. There are, however, factors here that are showing positive signs. One is, seems to be a, a broken record from, from my mouth, is the deed transfer tax. The summer is usually a lot more, there's just a lot more transactions in the summer years, months, that, that, and what we're seeing is that we're ahead of schedule there, so 26,000 of the surplus is reflected in that one line item. The rest of the variances that are, that are generating the surplus are actually coming out of things like the REN, which we thought that we would, you know, we anticipated $37,000 this year, well, we know we're not gonna spend that much, 'cause we're not, the REN isn't established. Plus, there's some other factors that are coming in provincially that have delayed that process, which we may actually tap into other funds that could help us even further, so some of those factors, obviously, we didn't know at the time we did the budget, and that's producing some, some positive variances in, in our expenses to date. A lot of savings in the administrative, administration and training, travel grants at this time, some of that has not yet been dispersed, so that's why we're showing a surplus there. Garbage collection and disposal is showing better than planned, we typically are a little high on our estimates, and to make sure that we're, we're covered, we're looking, that looks like it could be a, a surplus at the end of the year, but that could change. Other areas of note would be some of the operations that have a winter cost, like the Pumneco library, et cetera, they'll have a winter cost that we don't, that we won't see until the winter, so things like fuel, et cetera, will, will jack up in the wintertime, which will reflect, will reduce that surplus, but those are kind of smaller items. So overall, operating as planned, better than planned in, in the expense side, for now, and so I would respectfully recommend that you accept the financial report at August 31st, and this, of course, is, is a report of only the operating fund.
Okay. Any questions at this time for our CAO? Councillor Dawson?
Long, or the very top of taxes, residential, is that normal for, for that much to still be unpaid in taxes, residential taxes, I mean, it's only 47%?
What that, what we do with that number, that's a really good question, because what typically happens is we, we bill the full amount in May, as you know, but what we do, because we're, because the expenses only come in over, over time, we actually prorate that revenue amount. So what you see there is, is not necessarily what was collected or not collected, what it refers to is, is our estimate of, of that revenue for this period of time. The collections are slightly better this year at the end of August than they were last year at this time, probably by 40 or 50,000 dollars, so the, from a collection side, we're actually a little bit better, and the year before we were, and we were a little bit better last year compared to the year prior, so seems to be okay.
All right, any other questions? I haven't heard none, anybody move to, or care to move the financial report as reported by our CAO?
Make the motion to approve the CAO's financial report.
Okay, moved by Councillor Bork.
Did it approve or accept, or?
Accept.
Accept?
Accept.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded, we all heard the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Right, we'll move on to number six, other business, and for decision, the first one, six A, is municipal office building, this would be a open discussion, I think staff is looking maybe for direction, and, you know, we've been talking about this for a while now, but I guess it's kind of an open discussion to, to see where we're at and where we're maybe headed, but I'll let Alan start, I think you've got a few things to mention about this first.
We had actually, one of the councillors at our previous meeting had, had shared a, I guess, an expression of concern by one of, one of his citizens regarding accessibility of this building, and I think that as staff, we see, we hear that, and every year, we hear it worse, because our population is aging, and we're not as mobile, and quite frankly, this building really doesn't have any accessibility, it has a lot of accessibility issues. So this has been, this has been something that's been discussed off and on for quite some time, and I guess from a staff perspective, we're starting to see things deteriorate in the building, and from our perspective, what we want to know is, is, you know, how much do we invest in this building, knowing that this is a public building, knowing that, you know, both, both the staff and, and council and public access this building on a fairly regular basis? We, we would like to understand more fully what council's intentions are around either significant retrofit or, or actually consideration for a new administration building. I think that doing nothing is really not an option for us at this time, we have to deal with this accessibility problem, if we were to build this new, if this was a new building, we would not meet our own codes, and that's a little disconcerting to me and, and to others, because we actually enforce those codes on others, and it really is a, a real disconnect to the community, and so we'd like to, we'd like to do what council wishes us to do, but I think there's a lot of complexity around this decision, so we want to, I guess, inform you and bring you what you need in order to make a good decision around it, but I think what we want to also know is, what are your needs? And so that's why I think the Warden brought this up, and wanted to bring this to the agenda, I, I had spoken to the Warden about it as well, about some of the complaints that have come through this year that were actually quite a bit higher this year in terms of volume compared to the previous years. So I just, I guess that's kind of an introduction, I don't want to, it's your discussion, so I just wanted to start it off by saying, this has been our experience, and we, we do want to, to, to improve that situation, but this is something that we need guidance from you.
Okay. I guess before we can make a decision on anything, well, we need, we need some information, so what information do we want from staff to make that decision? We need to know, like Alan said, what retrofit would look like, do you want to add on to the building, do you want to put another story up above, I don't think we can, but the foundation wouldn't allow it, probably, or do we want a new building and use this for something else? I don't know. But we need, it's hard to make a decision when you don't know, you know, so we're gonna have to have, get, get some information, or whether we get somebody in here to, to inspect the building and give us a report, you know, of deficiencies or what, I don't know, but we have to start somewheres.
Okay. Councillor Bork.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, I think we should have a report of what it's gonna cost to make a new building, or to renovate this one, possibility, no stairs, because our population, like Alan said, is getting older, and we need accessibility for people coming in. It was one, it was a lady from my district who made a complaint, the last complaint that we had brought forward, it was, me and Danny were there at the same time.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so, and everywhere else, all the buildings are accessibility and accessible to wheelchairs, people that have hard times climbing stairs, and more ramps, and things like that, so I'd like to see probably a report on a new building or, or retrofitting this one.
Okay. Councillor LeBlanc.
This is a complex issue, I'm, I'm guessing we're gonna have numerous conversations around this, just try to be brief. Before we get to, maybe what Councillor Bork has said, I think we have to maybe poll staff, not poll staff, but maybe ask each individual staff what their concerns are, don't get me wrong, we're in here a lot, but we don't work here eight to five every day like, like the rest of staff does. I'd like to see staff, you know, voice their concern, they're the ones who have to work here, I mean, we drop in once, twice, three times a week in a few meetings, but they're the ones who really see what's going on. Sort of given the fact that economic uncertainty in the area, it's, it's almost discouraging to have to even raise the issue, as anything, anything that has to be done, be it a major retrofit or, or a new building, is gonna be costly, no doubt, but we do have an industrial park, land shouldn't be an issue in case we do need to build a, a new building. If I had to guess, retrofitting this one may be a cheaper option, but probably not a smarter option, with, with, kind of like Councillor Bork says, given the fact we have a aging population. I'd like to see, I guess, trying to make this brief, I'd like to see staff's opinion, possibly before we go out and get actual quotes, I mean, to get an actual quote, you have to design a building, you have to have in mind what you're looking for, we've talked about the possibility of pairing with the Yelbrough Fire Department. I think before we even go and get quotes or ideas of what this would cost, we have to really do some sort of homework, maybe even set a staff member on, on the case of what, you know, to kind of lead, what direction would, would be best, just to give council a feedback, 'cause ultimately, it's our decision in the end. Anyway, that's about it.
Okay. Councillor Muse?
The, according to the emails that we, that we received, there's been an assessment done of this building in 2009.
Yes, I produced a, a paper copy, 'cause I recognized-
Exactly.
-that you were having trouble opening it, each of you will have a copy of that-
Yes.
-today.
Yeah, I was, I was able to open.
Oh, you were, okay.
You have to download it, there, there's, there's another download, and it says, download the entire file first, takes a little time, and then you can open it. I tried it first and it wouldn't work, but anyway, would we need, would we need another assessment of this building? What, what's been done since 2009? There was recommendations on that, 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 that there was immediate or intermediate and long-term.
Correct.
And has there been that much money spent on this building since 2009 to, to rectify some of the issues that were addressed or identified in that report? If, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know what it costs to have an estimate done, are we wasting our money by doing, not an estimate, I'm sorry, an assessment, are we wasting our money to have another assessment? We basically know what the deficiencies are in the, in the building itself, the age, the, you know, I mean, no matter how much money you spend on this building, it's still a 1949 or whatever building, right? No matter what. It's probably built well, but definitely not to the standards that we, that, that are required in this time and age. I mean, we, we just, like, like you said, we, we're nowhere's near, we, we're, we're not, we're not following the codes, we're not, we're not even coming close to the codes. I think, regardless of what we do, we've got to have an accessible building, there's no doubt in my mind. I mean, I, I'm surprised that we're not forced to have one, you know, because it is a public building, and, and now, anything that you do needs to be accessible. Even the bathrooms downstairs are not accessible to a wheelchair, I don't think they would be.
They're not.
You know, there's no way, you'd never get in there.
Can't get there with a wheelchair.
But you can't get down anyway, so, you know, so anyway, I, I'm just wondering if, if we can't just, you know, get some estimates, whatever estimates, I, I'm not saying that we go out and get an estimate, but I'm wondering if we, if we need to do another actual hire firm to do an assessment of this building again, that's, that's just my, my question.
Okay. Councillor Dawson?
Question and comment, whatever we do, retrofit or build new, it's gonna be quite a while down the road before it's, it becomes accessible to anybody, whether you're handicapped or not. Is there something we should be doing, temporary, tearing the front part out there and redesigning that, so at least there'd be ramps, it don't have to be elevators, but ramps that, that they could access and get in, get in up here to this?
We've had that priced years ago, and that was 200 and-
Yeah, but that was an elevator.
No, a ramp.
I can't see.
It was really expensive.
The, 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 the issue with the ramp, and I think we had, well, we had three options that were examined, I, I can't recall the cost on the ramp, but I can tell you what is required in order to put one. The elevator was multi-hundreds of thousands, and this, that's probably an old price now, and there was also a cost around the lift, which would not be the full elevator, but the, you know, the automated. What's required in order to, to do a temporary fix, if you just want to put a ramp for access in the short term, would be that we would require quite a bit of room in the parking lot.
Well, I just think you're coming parallel with the, having your access point over in that side of the building, and come parallel with the building until you got to this level here.
Yeah.
And have a, almost like a double door, like a up door and a down, like a-
Yeah, I, I think that because of the code and the inclination around the code, the incline that's required, it would require us to use at least the first row of parking that's there currently, so, and that would be in order to get the-
Yeah.
I don't think you'd be able to, to do the, do the ramp in a way-
Okay, that to go back and then back.
It would kind of have to, you know, meander around before you got it to the right height for it to, to be, it can be done, but, but that's what it would look like, so if we did that, I think it would trigger another decision around the parking lot.
Or you just add on another-
You, that, and that's an option, like you, so, so that's the kind of thing that any sort of temporary fix almost drives you in the decision of, okay, well, how much further do we go in order to, to, to do this? I mean, if we do this as a temporary fix, is it gonna cost us more?
But if we're gonna be four or five years, I mean, are the public willing to wait? Because like you say, we're getting more and more complaints all the time.
Why would we wait four or five years?
Well, by the time you get final construction done, you're gonna be four or five years. By the time you get all the architect drawings and, well, look at Nikhil, it's been 10 years.
I, I think that the timeframe is, is a good, is a good topic to raise, it depends on what you're going to do, this is a multi-year project regardless, so we're not gonna be able to, like, if we decided today, if we were going to just retrofit this and expand, it would be-
I'm not saying that, I'm just-
Probably a three-year process.
I'm just saying in the next six months, find a way to get people in the building that want to get in, that can't get in the building.
Oh, I see, okay.
And, yeah, it's gonna be, well, it's not gonna be wasted money, but it's not gonna be money that goes towards any future project, because more than likely, it would be had to be tear, if we decide to keep this building, that would probably have to be torn out as we was doing the retrofit. I'm just, the concern of getting people in here in the, in the short term for the next few years, until whatever we do is done.
I-
And if it's a $50,000 ramp, then it's a $50,000 ramp, but-
Be more than that, we can't do it for that, but anyway.
Well, we should have it walked out. And I have one more.
Whoops, sorry. Go ahead.
The building fund, how much is in that? We have, we've put it, we've been putting it aside as long as I've been here.
Yeah, back in, and there's, there's a history there, I won't spend a lot of time on, but back in 1997, we had done a report on this, on this building, and identified a lot of deficiencies and fixed some, but at the time, couldn't afford to build something new or do the retrofit, so at the time, there was a, there was a, I guess, a 10-year commitment of $100,000 per year. That was, I'm gonna say, 15 or 16 years ago. The amount of money gone to the reserve has, has been at least 100,000, even in the years past, year 10. If we looked at the Capital Reserve, on the audited statement, said cash of 2.9 million, but that's, there's, there's some, there's some liabilities associated to that number that would reduce the actual available number. I think that the, if we were to look at the amounts that we've transferred to the Capital Reserve, some of that didn't relate to, to, to this building fund, they all went to Capital Reserve. There's at least 1.5 million there that I would be very comfortable saying that was transferred specifically with the intent of using for the building, but not exclusively for the building.
Yeah.
So I'd be comfortable saying that number.
We started that in the last year or, or last two years that Robert Tebow was here as our clerk. I, I think, you know, it's, we have to start somewhere, I think that probably if, if we were interested, probably the best thing to do would be to go and, and take and make site visits, and see what others have, what Claire has, what, you know, there's, there's, you know, we don't have to invent something new. There's, there, you know, we don't have to invent something new. Uh, there must be things out there, municipal buildings that are, you know, are pretty workable and, and so, maybe that's the best thing. Have a look at what's, what's around us, what's elsewhere, you know?
Counselor Allright?
I just was wondering, maybe I'm being naive, but I'm just wondering, um, when it comes to funding this building, is it solely us that pays for that, or are there other sources of, of income that we get for that?
The quick answer is that depends, um, so I'll, I'll get into the detail.
Okay.
Um, if we built a new building that was certified under the Green Globe's, uh, uh, standard, which you can imagine is, is, uh, not, it's not as high as a LEED standard, I mean, I'm not overly familiar with these standards, but it, it's a green standard, okay? Um, if you have that certification on a new building, and maybe even a retrofitted building, that, that I haven't, uh, uh, researched enough, um, you can actually use your gas tax, which is federal funds, to offset all or part of that cost. That's a significant issue. If you are going to think outside the box a little bit around the building and say that you'd like your building to be this and that, so, and I would suggest that if you're looking at that option, you're probably looking at a new building. So, if you're thinking about incubating business, or if you're thinking about putting a satellite library, or if you're putting something community-related, you could actually attract funding for at least that portion. Um, uh, I know that Eelbrook was talking to us about their Eelbrook Fire Department. That's an example where you might be able to get an amount of money, uh, a portion of which would relate to the fire department, but because you're building it as one building, it might actually reduce costs. So, there's not a lot of funding out there, um, uh, that deals specifically with municipal administrative buildings as a standalone. Okay? Um, and I would be more, I'm very confident to say if you built new and did it at a Green Globe standard, that you would qualify for the gas tax. I'd have to look to see if a significant retrofit would, you, whether you'd be able to meet that standard. You can imagine that standard's fairly high, so a lot of changes would have to happen in a significant retrofit in order to meet that standard. So, that's approximately, like, things like a COA funding, they've, unless you've got it attached to something that they're interested in as a priority, you're out of luck. So, so, um, you can, and, and so what I envision is if you're not able to access that fu- grant funding, you might be looking at a combination of capital reserve, your savings, and, and, um, and borrowing. That, that could be possible, and then of course, would be paid over the life or partial life of, of the new asset. So, I mean, there's a variety of projections that I would prepare for council under both scenarios. Um, but, but in terms of grant revenue, that's, that's about it now. Should, there's probably one other exception, if you were to do a temporary fix, you may qualify for a federal grant, uh, to enable accessibility. So there, sometimes there's seniors enabling accessibility funds, both provincial and federal, that could allow you to do something temporarily to this building, but I'm not talking about big dollars there. That could be maybe capped out at fifty thousand, maybe twenty-five.
Okay. All right, uh, don't see any other lights on, but I'd just like to add, uh, I think the, uh, if, if I remember correctly, uh, when I was at, uh, conference there in Halifax in June, I talked to somebody from the District of Saint Mary's, and they built a, uh, brand-new building, uh, using gas tax. And, uh, it was a, uh, you know, I think it was Green Globe, uh...
It was.
It was that, and, uh, they also got money from, uh, I'm just trying to think now, um. Did they get it from some kinda municipal corp, or had, were able to borrow it?
Yeah.
At a very, very low interest, or something, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure in their instance, but we actually took advantage of a low interest rate through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Green Municipal Fund when we did the West Public Treatment Plan. It could be a similar arrangement.
Okay. All right, so there is, uh, I guess there is some exa- examples out there that we could, uh, you know, I guess, get the figures from, and so. I think that was, uh, what's, if I remember correctly, was the Marion, Marion Fraser, I think her name is, so. And District of, uh, Saint Mary's, I think that's her name, so.
Maybe Clark or Ward, yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, so we've had our discussion, uh, and I think we've given council, uh, we've given staff, sorry, uh, some, some guidance. Uh, do you feel like you've got some guidance there, CAO Muse?
No.
Yes, I, I just wa- I wanted to make mention, you know, I, I kinda, I didn't give this, this information, um, earlier, uh, not purposely, uh, it relates to the report that, that you'll all get a copy of, that Danny was able to open, was the three ma- uh, so, we have spent some money on this building since two thousand and nine. And so I, I want to address that question, cause you had asked that. Uh, the biggest piece was the ventilation side, we had a, an air conditioner unit that was really too small. And they had recommended a heat pump that would've costed like fifty or sixty grand. Um, uh, we actually, uh, did an air conditioning as an option, which was a little less than twenty. So, um, uh, which, which has improved the ventilation in this, in this office, that was a major change. The, the, the three things that, the two other things that were major, that I think are continuing to be major, is the accessibility, we've talked about that, the other is the fire rating. Uh, the, the, in, 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 it's not at code, and it's extremely expensive to, to bring us to code in this, in this building. Um, it's, it's at a minimum eighty grand, if not more, to, to meet that standard. Um, the other code issue in this building that you'll have, whether you retrofit or not, is the basement. The basement height of the ceilings is too low. So, if you were to significantly retrofit this building, which is a completely legitimate option, one of the things you, you may have to come to grips to is that there would be no staff in that basement. Whereas there, there are currently staff members working in the basement of this, of this building. So, so unless something very substantial in terms of structure was to change in order to enable that, you, I believe it could be used as storage, but I'd have, again, I'd have to check with code on that, I'm certainly not a code expert. But you could use the, the space for another use. So there, there, there are, and I mean, we're not gonna micro that decision today, but I just, I wanted to identify like two or three things about code in this building that we would have to rectify in a retrofit situation. Um, the, the other thing is, is that, is, is in order to make, uh, I guess, a decision on the long, to, 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 to take a long view around what, what's going on here is, if there is a new building construction decided, what do we do with this one? All right, that's the other, uh, question, and if, and if there is a use that requires accessibility, then maybe we have to deal with that issue temporarily regardless of what we decide to do. So, so that's, I think the, the issue of accessibility is really a driving force in this decision, I think. Like, we, we don't have a lot of space in this building, but we, we actually rent, um, we rent offices. So if, if push came to shove, we could, we could say, you know, District Planning Commission, we can no longer provide you a, a, a rent, uh, rental location, when we could, you know, there are certain things that we could do within the confines of this building, but we would still have the code issues and accessibility issues. So, I just wanted to point out that, like, so what I've heard from direction is to look at the potential temporary uh, costs around a temporary solution on accessibility. Um, I heard, uh, perhaps site visits might be something that you'd like staff to coordinate, maybe identify five or six buildings that maybe suit our size and style, uh, Saint Mary's being one of them. I would suspect that it would be a, a good one to look at, especially with the Green Globes. We don't, it'd be nice to see what a Green Globe-certified building looks like. Um, and what else, I, I also, uh, heard that, uh, council wanted a staff report on the deficiencies that they noted. And I would suspect that we would take the two thousand and nine report, maybe refresh it, because I don't think we require a brand-new report, we may want to refresh this report, however.
Just internally, you mean?
Internally and with the, with the engineers that actually did the work, cause they could upgrade their prices for two thousand thirteen, and they might, you know, we don't want them to come here and do a full evaluation again, but we could get the engineers to give us updated prices around construction, that would be more reflective of today's dollars. So, that would not cost a lot of money to do, I don't think. So, so, it, does, is that, does that sound reasonable as a starting point?
Start.
Start.
Okay, I think Counselor Muse and something else?
Yeah, just a quick question, uh, when you're talking about the fire rating and whatever, that hasn't been, uh, addressed. Is there any way, I mean, would that, would that come from the Fire Marshal's office, you know, like, is it? I guess my question is, could, could, could the Fire Marshal or any other organization come and force us to spend a lot of money in here in doing some of these, some of, to, 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 to bring, to bring some items up to code? Could we be forced to do that by, you know?
Eventually.
I, I don't, I honestly don't know the proper answer to that question.
Okay, yeah.
Um, I don't, like, I know that we've done a fire inspection, uh, of, of the facility, but there's a difference between a fire inspection and the Fire Marshal.
That's right, be- because it's the same as the, the height in the, in the, in the basement. I mean, that's a code issue, right?
Yes.
I mean, if that's a code issue, could, who could enforce that, that, that would tell us, sorry, you can't have any offices down there? For whatever reason.
Yes, and the construction of this, of course, predated some of those rules, and I think that's why, uh, they haven't been enforced to a significant, uh, effect, cause there'd be a lot of buildings, I think they would have to...
Well, that's it, because, uh, the codes are only in effect once, you know, once they come into effect, anything beyond that, but they, they don't go back and, and make everybody meet that code now.
No.
It's an existing, existing building. Okay, no, that's just, just a question I had.
No, it's, I'll, I'll look into the answer to that, to the Fire Marshal question, it's important to have an understanding of that.
Now, what kind of, uh, I guess we, we gave some direction, are we looking at a timeline or a deadline? Or is there something that council would, uh, that staff would, uh, you know, kinda like to know when, uh, to, to report back, or? Guess I'm asking you, uh, CAO Muse?
We'll get the internal information, um, and in terms of selecting locations, we could probably do that in about two weeks. That's not a, a big deal. What, what might be outside of our timeframe, out of our control in terms of timeframe might be the upgrades to the deficiency report of two thousand and nine.
Okay.
So, so I could engage that, that group to, to reexamine that. Um, but that, would, we'd be at the mercy of their schedule, we can push, of course. Uh, but some of the other stuff we could do fairly quickly, we could have some, a draft, kind of understanding where we are as early as next meeting, being the fifteenth of October.
Okay.
Um, uh, at the latest, at the, at the next meeting.
All right.
And then, you know, that might develop other steps from there. Um, the other thing that I might suggest to council is that, you know, we're not all, we're, we're certainly, none of us are really in the business of building municipal administration buildings every year. Um, and engineers have, have, have a, a positive tendency to come in and, and do an assessment, but they, they're, they too rely on certain estimates around their work. Uh, it might be useful to, uh, communicate with some of our local contractors, not necessarily put them in a, in a place where, where they're in conflict, but to, to talk to them about, um, what their experiences have been with older buildings such as this, and what their recommendations might be in terms of a decision-making, um, I guess, matrix or template for you to make, to, to do, because I, I mean, obviously it's a very big decision that generally has, uh, high profile, uh, in the community, and, and I think there's a varying amounts of, of opinions around what should happen, and, uh, I think we just wanna be sure that we do a diligent job. And, and we have a lot of really talented local contractors that could give us good, good wi- wise advice around that.
Mm-hmm.
So, I offer that as, if you wish me to pursue that, I would do that for you, I offer that as a, as a piece of advice.
I think that's a good, uh, yeah. All right? Yeah, okay, so, I think that's a, a good discussion, and, uh, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to, uh, the next item, which is six B, the Economic Development Plan Approval. Attachment with three pages. Just having trouble opening it.
I think your recommendation on this is right on.
Agreed.
Okay. Right on. I was reading through it earlier. And actually, I was to the meeting where he presented the file report, and so I'm familiar with this, and, uh...
Yeah, I would say set up this committee that you recommend and move on this report and bring it back to us in the future, and I'll make that, yeah, there's a suggested motion here, can you write that down?
Got it.
Good.
So, Richard, you're making that a motion?
Yes.
I'll, I'll second it, yeah.
The motion is to accept the Argyle Economic Development Plan is presented by Chris Loeb. Planning and Management Group and request staff to establish an ADCA, committee to develop an action plan for council's approval.
Okay, so been moved by Counselor Donaldson and seconded by Counselor LeBlanc. Uh, you've all, question, you all heard the, the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, motion carried. All right, we'll move on to, uh, six C, Committee of the Whole Meetings versus Regular Council Meeting. I think at our last meeting, if I remember correctly, we did, uh, have a, a short discussion on this, uh. Does anybody else, uh, have to, wanna weigh in on this? Counselor Donaldson?
I'd say call on both regular council meetings and make, and make the second Tuesday of the month your priority meeting, because we don't always need the second one, sometimes we don't have, have the second committee of the whole meeting. Now, most times we do, but sometimes we don't. But I would say keep the second Tuesday as our primary date, and when we do have one, which will be most of the time, well, what's it, the fourth Tuesday, it'd be another regular council meeting, so we can, because we've been treating it like a regular council meeting, I don't remember too many times we made motions in this committee of a whole, and then took them on to the next council meeting and re, re-approved them, except when you read the minutes, I guess it, or when you approve the minutes, it does it, but other than that, remains, so just, that's my opinion.
Okay, uh, Warden, Donaldson.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on, on most of it, or maybe, maybe all of it, but I think, uh, I had a discussion with our CAO on this, and, uh, maybe we should set, uh, some priorities. What do we want to deal with in the first one, and what do we want to deal with in the second one, like, we don't know, you know? Presentations, do we only, only want presentations at one meeting? The first one of the month, or, you know, things like that, we have to decide on, eh? Yet, there's a lot of policy, policies that have, we have to check the policies and, and change, and change some things. So, maybe, maybe that's one thing we wanna look at. May, kinda keep it like we're doing now? Presentations at the first one, and, uh, uh, requests and, you know, financial request and things like that at the second one, or, you know, kinda have something to, so the staff know what to, what to put on the, on the agenda for the first and second, or...
So that's, uh, that would have to go through policy?
Yeah.
So that's, yeah.
Yeah, we have to revamp the policy anyway, a lot of changes to be made.
Yeah, I think, i- if I may, uh, Bylaw twenty-six refers to council procedure. Uh, some of the procedures that are in our bylaw, I'm not sure that we follow to a T in terms of some of the rule, not, I, I mean, they're not, I guess they're suggested approach. I think if we were going to go regular, regular, as you're suggesting, that I suspect there are bylaws out there now that we could quickly incorporate. It just, I guess my only, uh, comment would be that, that to actually do this change may require a change in the bylaw, which is not a big deal. Uh, it, and I'll look into the provisions of whether or not that should be by policy, uh, cause policy changes are generally more efficient. And, uh, so, so, I mean, I can look at the, the, um, I guess the clerk side of that, but I mean, if your interest is to do regular, regular, is what I'm hearing, then, uh, I'm just, that, that shouldn't be a problem. It just may take a while before it takes effect, that's all.
Okay. So at this time, we're, are we looking for a motion to, to, to change it? And then you'll work on the policy, and then whenever that's in effect, we'll go to regular, regular?
Yeah, if, if council wishes to go regular, regular, it can make that motion now, it will not immediately make you regular, regular, I guess. It will trigger the work to, to make that happen.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
If we go to a regular meeting, try to do it then, one regular, one regular.
Yes.
Okay, so a motion by Counselor Muse, uh, seconded by Counselor Bourke. Any more discussion? Any more discussion, hearing that?
I think part, part of the policy is, I think in the policy now, it states that the Deputy Warden chairs the county of the whole, that would have to be changed, if you still want the Deputy Warden to change, to chair one of the meetings, you know, or that, all those, but that's all in the bylaws.
And that's all the stuff we can work on.
Yeah, yeah, easy.
Yeah. So, you've heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. All right, move on to six D, Publico Point slash Wedgeport Point, No Dumping Sign Request. Council LeBlanc, I'll let you start.
Let me start, all right. As always through the years, there's been, there's been dumping on Wedgeport Point, there's various side roads, private property, just recently, there was hydraulic hose dumpings on a private property that just really discouraged me, actually to the point where one resident who walks regularly on the point actually took it upon himself, printed a sign professionally, painted it himself, and, and just a, it's a very small no dumping sign, and that's actually done a number of good up until recently, and I'm just, I'm discouraged, there's never been a sign till now, I'd like to, I'd like to see a large, and what I mean large, a sign stating that dumping is illegal, and that maybe it's, the, the point is sort of, almost goes far as to say patrolled by a sort of a neighborhood watch, a group of people that walk there regularly, and now we have a new Wedgeport walking group that, that walks on the, through the Recreation Department here, you just don't want to see it, and I'd like to think the residents of Wedgeport are, have a good conscious mind, and I think if their friendly reminder would be there in large bold letters at the starting of the road, just to pass the, my father's old boat shop there, I think, I personally actually do believe it would maybe not cure the problem, but definitely lessen it, so I just, I'd like to see the municipality of Argyle put a nice big sign.
Okay, I'll jump on to, to mine, the Publico Point one, and that's the one that I brought up, a couple of weeks ago, we were working on the Publico Point Trail, there was forty volunteers who came out, we worked all morning, and then a little bit after lunch, and lo and behold, about four or five days later, just past where we were working, they dumped a whole bunch of stuff there, so it was pretty discouraging when you've got, you know, forty volunteers working to, you know, make a walking trail, so that people in the community can use it and exercise, and, you know, enjoy the beauty of nature, and people come and, you know, dump their garbage, so, anyway, I guess what I'm looking for is for council, and I called the Department of Transportation, and the procedure for no dumping signs from them is to write a letter, council to write a letter requesting these signs, so that's what I'm asking for. Council LeBlanc, your, I guess your request is a little bit different, but if you wanted to go that route, we could also add that on, that way, it wouldn't cost the municipality anything, I guess, directly, anyway.
I, sorry if I may, I just noticed my mic's still on.
It's still on.
I thought of going the, the normal route, sorry, and I just feel like that's done here and there to sometimes no avail, and I thought if it was a little bit higher up, a little bit further back on the side of the road, I'm only realizing after, after you spoke here, there may be a, a, a legal matter there, I'm not sure if you're allowed to post a sign, and I actually know the owner of the property where it would be posted, but yes, it would cost a few dollars to the municipality, but I think a few dollars of prevention would, would be worth it, given the fact that we may have to clean up a larger mess in the future, so I guess we, I didn't realize, but we are sort of asking for two different.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Okay, Council Muse?
When you're talking about these trails, are they, they're not on highway property, are they?
No.
So, I'm just wondering if the department has any jurisdiction in putting a sign there, would, would they do that?
I guess if, to make myself clear, the, the sign wouldn't be posted on the trail, the trail is just adjacent to where the road is, people are coming down the road and dumping, you know, the trail just happens to be right there, we have a parking lot in, in my, in the Publico Point instance, there's a parking lot that was made for the trail, and people are dumping just right in the general area.
Okay, so it's still, it's still within highway property?
Yes, yes, the signs would be posted on highway property.
And what about in Wedgeport, the same thing, is it still off of the, of the department's, of, of, of public highway, I guess?
Well, when you think about it, I don't know how familiar you are with Wedgeport, where the pavement ends, it's a dirt road that, just like Publico ends at the point, and there's offshoots of trails and, and private trails owned by the museum and whatnot, so the gentleman who took it upon himself to, to make a sign, just posted it just where the pavement ends type thing, so, the location, I guess, that I would like to see the sign would probably be within thirty-three feet of the center of the road.
Yeah.
So, I guess it might be highway property, while we're speaking about it, you would know, given your, your past, your past employment, can you place a private sign on department property, can a municipality do that?
On, on pro, on private property, anything on the right of way, you, you, unless, unless it's, it's changed, now, I don't want to speak on behalf of the department, but, but unless it's changed, in order to post any kind of sign on department property, you can do it, but you need a permit to do so, like, they just, they just need to know what you're going to do.
Which shouldn't be an issue.
And, and in that, in that case there, where it's probably not a, a road that's used that much, I don't know that you would ever, ever get the department to, to object, but, again, I can't, I can't speak on their behi, on their behalf, so, but I, I was just wondering, I didn't know that this was still on, on highway.
Yeah.
When, when you talked about having one down there, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, I guess my request is for, for council to write a letter to the Department of Highways requesting a no dumping sign to be put on their right of way, or their, their road, so that's what I'm looking for. Council LeBlanc, obviously looking for something else.
I'll make that a motion, that we contact the department.
And I'll second that.
For, for the no dumping sign at, at the Publico Point.
Okay, so, been moved by Warden Donaldson, and seconded by Council Muse, any more discussion there, no? Having heard none, all those, you, you heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Contrary? Okay, carried. Now, let's go to Council LeBlanc's request.
Yes, I guess, given the fact, I, I just don't feel like a standard highway sign will, will do it justice, given that there's actually a very similar one that just says no dumping, I'd like to see maybe a sign from the municipality, possibly with the logo somewhere on it, it may be a clever, something a little more clever, a little more, I don't know what the word I'm trying to use, I guess, something that really would make someone driving down that road about to dump something to think maybe he shouldn't, I guess, a clever slogan of some sort, saying no dumping, installed by the municipality, so, I, I guess we'd have to collaborate with staff on what it would exactly say, but essentially, the message would say no dumping, municipality of Argyle, and I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've been moved and seconded.
We'd probably say that, you know, people that are caught, or whatever, however you phrase it, would be-
Yeah, maybe start with please keep our, our trails clean, and there's a liability issue with being caught.
They probably could come and-
Exactly, just something like that.
Put a sign up that there's a camera.
Well, there is a neighborhood watch there, so you could, you could mention that on the sign, I just-
We're watching.
Yeah.
And, and where, where would the, I guess, where would the funds come from, we have, we, we have a fund for unsightly, for, for garbage and stuff, right?
Yeah, there's, there's two or three options there, one might be, you know, collaboration with Waste Check, the other would be under legal dump site, I think there's some room there, and there's also unsightly and dangerous, that we certainly are under budget thus far this year, so, I mean, the cost of a sign of that nature is not, is not excessive, really kind of ballparking depends on the sign, but it could be, you're probably talking about a five hundred to seven hundred dollar, depending on the size, right, you can get them really cheap, but I think, um-
I'd also like to add that you would just need to make the sign, installing it, I can take care of.
Right.
Back off, no problem.
Okay.
So, it would just be the actual physical cost.
It's the expensive part.
It would just be the physical cost of the sign.
Yeah, and I shouldn't, you know, just randomly throw out a number on the sign, I mean, it would depend on the size and, and the nature of it, and it would probably be bilingual, which increases the size and content.
True.
We'd have one in there.
Maybe once we see this one, we'll, we want more, and that sounds like a good idea.
I think it is.
I see, I see garbage underneath a no dumping sign that was put up last year, just the other day.
All right.
There's garbage everywhere.
Question on the motion.
Okay. Further motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay.
Have a sample, then, we can build some more.
All right, we'll move on to six E, Development Office and Building Inspection Software. I think this was brought to council because it didn't follow exactly policy, and C A Muse wanted to have a discussion, go ahead.
The purchase itself is actually below budget, the budget amount was forty, forty fi, seems to me it was forty-five thousand dollars, we, we were really not sure how much the software was going to cost at the time of the budget, we knew that we were in, in, you know, need of a software, well, I'd call it upgrade, but there's no existing software, so it would be a new software program. This particular item, the reason why I brought it to, to council, typically I would execute the, the budget, but in this instance, because of the uniqueness of the purchase, it was difficult for us to effectively use our purchase policy as, as written to the letter, so, what we want to do, I mean, the, the whole concept behind the purchase policy is to make sure that you're protecting the taxpayer in terms of your purchases, and that you're allowing competitive activity, in this case, the software is very unique, there are very few people that actually can provide this service, so to put an add-in, the, the vanguard around building inspection software, I don't know that we would have had too much success, I guess that's an understatement, so what we did was, we did research and we, and we identified those companies that actually do this, and one of them is the existing accounting software that we have, the other was actually another municipality that has an internal software program, and the third was the, actually the one that we're recommending, and so, we wanted to be comfortable, or at least wanted council to be comfortable with, was not so much the purchase, more, because the purchase has really already been approved, but, but the process, and that, that you were comfortable that the process was handled in a way that protected the taxpayer, and I mean, the fact that, that the cost is eighteen versus forty-five is, is some indication that we felt that, that, that our process was successful, however, it wasn't, it didn't fit exactly the process that we would typically follow in a, in a purchase in excess of ten thousand dollars, this is in fact eighteen, it also, I should note that it, in no way, it, in, in every way, the municipality adhered to the provincial legislation around purchasing, so we, we followed the provincial legislation around it to a T.
Okay. There is a C A O's recommendation, recommend that council approve the purchase of Marmac software product to enable online storage and management of our public works, related work, increasing, increasing efficiency and effectiveness of the department. Any more comments, or? Anybody care to move?
I'll move that council proceed with obtaining the required software from Marmac for the quoted price of eighteen thousand dollars.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Council Muse, seconded by Council Donaldson.
Question?
Question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay. So, that was, okay, we'll move on to six F, which is Relief of Tax Request with one-page attachment, I'm pretty sure that's you again, C A O Muse?
It's actually, we call it relief of taxes, it's actually relief of interest on, we're still trying to get through some of the coding in our, in our, in our accounting software, we don't always pick them up, these three customers should never have been charged interest, it should never have been coded as interest, they were coded as interest, we cannot write off interest without coming to council, I recommend that these three amounts amounting to three hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-five cents be, be approved by council.
So, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, oh, sorry?
No, I just, I just wanted to move and second it.
Okay, you're too late, all right, so, you've all heard the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, move on to six G, is Leading Edge Geomatics, LiDAR Mapping. And I think this one here is to be deferred, but I think you wanted to have a little bit of discussion, but deferred to October fifteenth, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, just, just as a notice, that we had received an offer to purchase LiDAR reporting, which is basically, Danny might be from, Council Muse might be familiar with this, it's basically a flyby over our community, and they take very specific pictures that, that, that deal with elevation, et cetera, in, in key communities, the reason why I'm looking to defer is I'm still waiting for information, I've, I've asked information from, from the, those that do the flyby, I'm still waiting for information from them, I'd also like the opportunity to speak with our engineers that have done work for the Wedgeport sewer, and I'd like to ask them specifically whether the LiDAR information around Wedgeport would be useful in case the Wedgeport sewer project was to come about, whether that would actually save the municipality money, because there's actually very specific information that a surveyor or somebody else would have to come in, in order to capture, so there might be advantages of actually purchasing this, I still haven't established that, so I'd like to defer it, but just as a heads up, the request is, is, has come to our attention, and it's, it's, it's a fairly significant purchase, if you look to purchase the Wedgeport, Publico, and, and Quinnen areas, or you could really focus on a very small area and pay a very small amount of money, or smaller amount of money, so, anyway, I, because we're deferring, I should stop talking, but I mean, ultimately, that's, that's what the, that's what that's about, just as, and the, the report is there, and of course, you can read what, what the Planning Department has, has put together.
Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next one, it's six H, which is Approval of the Audit and Financial Statements.
So, I'll move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Council Donaldson, seconded by Council Bourke, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Carried. Okay, move on to number seven, Correspondence and for Information, Waste Check, Bylaw Enforcement Officer Report. So, you've circulated with your report, I don't know if you have any questions or concerns, By the looks of the report, it seems like signs might be useful here and there, maybe really big signs.
With cameras.
Yeah.
That's not all Argyle though, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just Argyle.
Yeah.
I think that's what we did, we asked him for.
Yeah.
Well, this could be another one, the Currid Road, see if they have, under the logo, so.
All right, anybody, any comments on that? If not, we'll move on to seven B, which is the two thousand and thirteen Day Camp attendance, and if you see the attendance of the day camps, they were, numbers are good, Belleville was up from twenty-three and a half and a little bit more to twenty-six and a half, and Clement was up by a little bit, couple, and Publico was down, but still good, solid numbers for the day camp, so. Anybody else comment? Council LeBlanc, oh, I see you have a smile on your face.
I just have a smile on my face because West Publico, week two, on the Wednesday there, you see there's seventy-four kids, I was, I happened to drop in that day, and it just made me thankful I wasn't a day camp leader.
Okay.
It seemed a little hectic, that's, that's the only reason I was smiling.
Yeah.
Were you there with a kid?
No, I didn't pay the fee, you know, just dropping something off.
All right, all right, yeah, okay, if there's no other comments, we'll move on to- Okay, if there's no other comments, uh, we'll move on to number eight, Financial Request. And I don't think we have any. Uh, number nine is Notice of Motion. Any Notice of Motion? Council Bourke?
Uh, I'd like to make a Notice of Motion. Um, I've been asked quite a bit lately about sidewalks. So, um, I'm opening discussion on sidewalks at a future meeting.
Okay, so sidewalks, uh, in your district, is there a certain area? You have a long, a long district, so?
I have a long district, but it's, uh, mostly residents from Middle East Publico that are asking, um, for sidewalks.
Okay.
That area there. So, um, I'm opening, I want to have a good discussion on sidewalks.
Alright, good. Any other mo-, uh, Notice of Motion? Having heard none, we'll move on to number ten, Question Period. Any questions from the media?
I would like to invite you people to the All Candidates Forum on Thursday night.
Okay.
At the Saffir Modesture.
At what time?
It's at seven o'clock. The doors open at six-thirty and there's no cost to go in.
Okay, so that's, yeah, the candidates for the upcoming provincial election.
Uh, we have confirmed that the liberal candidate, we have confirmed the NDP and the progressive conservative candidates would be there for this afternoon. It was confirmed that the liberal one would be there. And for your information, it's the Chamber of Commerce, your Chamber of Commerce, that's, uh, organizes this in partnership with the Caped. And the format for the questions are going to be bilingual, but we expect the interaction between the candidates to be in English. And we've been told it's not guaranteed that SICA is going to broadcast directly. So we're a little bit excited about it. It's the first time that we have something like this. And if you see a lot of cars at the school, it's because of timing. It's also a parent teacher night, the first visitation of the semester. So, uh, that's taking place on Thursday night and so is this activity. Try to find the perfect night. I don't think it's possible.
Sorry, number, can I, can I just ask and clarify, what did you say the NDP can, NDP candidate would be there?
I said the liberal candidate would.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
The NDP and the conservative candidate confirmed their presence by, uh, email two or three days ago. And we just got confirmation this afternoon of the liberal candidate and we were quite concerned because of that.
Okay.
Uh, you invite these people and you make the, uh, were you aware that it was safe in place?
Yes, yes.
The question, Arvar, you said it didn't cost anything.
To go in, what about to go out? They charge.
No, it's, uh, it's an involvement of the news.
Yeah.
We haven't had this before.
Yeah.
And we just see, we've got the hall for it and, uh, I think Johnny Dion has offered his services free of charge to be in charge of the sound and.
Okay.
And Real is gonna be the, uh, the moderator.
Good, good, excellent.
Alright, thank you. No other questions? Having, having heard none, we will move on to eleven, which is In Camera.
Move, we go in camera.
Did you, um?
I just, for the next meet, date.